I'd like to call to order this September 8, 2025 Winchester Public School Board Work Session. Madam Park, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Richardson, Mr. Ireland.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Jimenez-Adams.
Here.
Ms. O'Connell.
Here.
Ms. Laurel. Dr. Debra.
Here.
Okay, thank you. This brings us to the public comment portion of our agenda this evening. Madam Park, did anybody sign up to address the board this evening? Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to address the board? I don't see anybody. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. This includes the approval of consent agenda items, the agenda, the minutes, and the details.
Motion to approve consent agenda items.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Harris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ireland. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have adopted the consent agenda. Reports and presentations. First up, we have school activity fund audit by Ms. McDonald.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have the school activity fund audit reports for FY 2025. There were five schools with no reported findings this year. That's an increase of one from last year, so we improved. We had two schools with findings, Daniel Morgan Intermediate School and Corals Elementary. They were, the findings were minimal in nature. We've already discussed them with them. And we've already put things in place to improve those for next year. And those are on page three and five of the internal control report and management suggestions. Daniel Morgan had a finding of the bookkeeper signing checks that were made to him for getting cash. And so there are other signers available, so he was just advised that he should not sign. There are always two signatures on each check, so there was another signature. And the Corals Elementary could not provide proof that they had put this receipt of cash in the safe between the time it was received into the office and taken to the bank. They state they did, but we now are requiring them to put written documentation with that when they put it in the safe. So these are presented to you, and the cost of the annual audit was $8,800, and that was paid from local funds.
Okay, thank you so much. Do you have any questions or comments for Ms. McDonald and Mr. Rattler?
You'll have to excuse me if you can't answer this question, but basically I was looking at the sort of boilerplate on the first page. And there was sort of this, the last sentence in the first paragraph says, "Accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the SAF's internal control."
The first word.
The last sentence of the first paragraph. So I just, I wasn't familiar with this disclaimer language. I assume that it's standard, but could, is it, can you give me any type of interpretation based on your knowledge?
They don't typically, unless we were asking them to audit the internal controls, they're not going to express an opinion on the internal controls. They're just presenting the internal control findings as presented through their review. I mean, we've employed them to do the audit, the internal control review is just a portion of the audit. So your opinion is on your audit report.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, settle them off. Nothing now. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. CTE advisory reports.
I'm presenting for Katie. Annually, the Winchester Public Schools CTE program have advisory meetings in order to review current and proposed programmatic offerings, state performance data, and annual measures, program progress, student opportunities, and success. And the purpose of the CTE advisory group is to provide support, guidance, and oversight to ensure CTE programs align with student needs as long, and also with our workforce demands and projected growth. Advisory committee will also provide input into developing maintenance into the Perkins loan. And to have a successful CTE program, competencies must align with teaching the skills necessary to prepare for in-demand, high-skill, high-wage career pathways. So here's a list of the advisory members and bring this to you just for support in terms of the members on this committee.
This is just for informational, correct? Mr. Ireland, you are on this committee. Is there anything that you'd like to add to this presentation?
No, I'm honored to be part of it and just to make the board continue to.
All right. Well, as always, we appreciate you for serving on this committee.
And just one added thing, there's also other kind of subcommittees almost with, within, you know, these different areas of the CTE program. And our teachers also have connections with different groups and companies throughout the area, just so they have that connection. So this is the larger group of them, and then it kind of branches off into the smaller advisory groups there as well.
All right. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Moving right along. Operation, Mr. Smith.
Hey there. Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight I have just, I have a couple very quick updates. First one is I just wanted to provide you with an update on some of our projects that we did this summer. We have hired a replacement for our previous project manager, Kevin. Tony Spie, he started last week. And he'll be taking on some of the projects that you'll see in here that are in process. And so I'm just going to run through a bunch of projects, tell you a little bit about each one, and then we're going to talk just a little bit about personally. I call my celebration slide because it is truly a celebration for what we've got going on in manpower. So our first project at Virginia Avenue, we removed the old playground and installed a new one for a total cost of about $114,000. And the kids seem to be enjoying it. On top of that, we took out an older playground and put in this monstrosity. And the kids love it. It's a spider tower, about $37,000. And Virginia Avenue is the last school to get one. We've been, we've been adding them to all of our schools at the elementary level because the first school was John Kerr when we opened it, and everybody saw it and said they wanted one. So over the, over time, over the last six or seven years, we've been adding them. And so Virginia Avenue has one now, and you can see the kids are on there.
The students like them.
They do.
And want another playground.
They do.
And more recess.
They told us, we just visited, and they wanted it.
Oh, they want more recess.
Yeah, more recess.
Because they heard about Corals, I guess.
Just a side note.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think they're more really.
Okay, one last thing, actually two more things at Virginia Avenue. One was security fencing. So behind the campus of the Virginia Avenue, there is an emergency access road that cars and vehicles use on a regular basis. And so in order to keep students off of that road in the way from it, we put up a set of fencing. It costs about $37,000. And I'll get to the last Virginia Avenue project here in a second. Over at John Kerr Elementary School, as you know, we moved the early childhood special education program from NREP to John Kerr. That required two large projects on our part, one being getting furniture for that grade level in place. And so we did that. There were four classrooms that received pre-k furniture and furniture that is designed for and provided for students with needs. And so the total cost of furniture in those four classrooms was about $116,000. And so we took care of that. And then, as you all know, we celebrated the opening of the early childhood playground back right before, right before school started, about $143,000. And the kids seem to be enjoying that as well. And no issues I'm aware of. We did have, we do have a little bit of an issue with the mat, the flooring there in the playground, but we're getting that. And then at Virginia Avenue, I mentioned one more project. We did have to replace the sidewalk. That sidewalk was sinking and became a trip hazard. And it's a very popular sidewalk coming from Van Boston Street up to the front door. And so a lot of kids ride their bikes to park up there and stuff. So we replaced that sidewalk. Put some support underneath it to get kind of looking nice there. And then over at Frederick Douglass Elementary School, we installed a sidewalk. As part of that move for the ECSE, they had to move some students from John Kerr to Frederick Douglass. And there was a need for that playground to have access to that swing set for students in wheelchairs. So we added a sidewalk there, and so the children can be rolled right up to the swing. You don't see the swing on there, but there is a specialized swing there now that students are rolled up and they can be lifted and secured in the swing for them to get playtime on that playground. So that kind of took in care of. Out at Melvin Roads, behind the Schiata Center, we updated, upgraded their security cameras. Their security cameras over the last several years have been an off-the-shelf unit. This time we decided to get those installed and tie it back into our network. And so we upgraded security cameras at that building for a total cost of about $20,000. So those are the projects that we completed. We do have one more project on the cap improvement plan that we'll be looking at this fall, and that is some concrete work at the Hamley Bowl. There's some concrete that's cracking. Weather gets to it, and it's been 15 years. And so there's some stuff that we're going to look at in the fall. So a couple of projects, three projects really, that are in the early stages. As you know, we've talked about this emergency vehicle area outside of the Hamley Bowl. We've developed some plans with, the Garden Club of Virginia hired a landscape architect, and they are footing the bill for the design of this. And so we took those plans to the Hamley Trusts, and the Garden Club of Virginia Board has looked at it as well, and they have all approved the conceptual drawings. And so the landscape architect is now doing the construction drawings. We are wrapping up some, some things on our end as far as getting a topographical survey and stuff for them. But they'll get those construction drawings done in the next few months, and then we will, and then we're working with Anony Engineering to make sure that all the water management for any kind of parking area is taken care of. They'll update, update the site plans and make sure that we meet all the requirements that the city has regarding watershed. So, so they're working on that now. Hopefully they'll get that wrapped up this fall, and then we can start looking at getting quotes after the new year and get started on it in the spring and summer. Our hope is that we do get this wrapped up by the end of next summer and in time for football season next year.
And then I would assume that any plan that the Garden Club of Virginia and everyone, the landscape architect has come up with includes some way to prohibit other vehicles from parking there?
Bollards.
Okay.
Sure does. Yeah, we have, we're going to have bollards there that will be installed that are easily moved with the lock and key. And then also a hedge that will protect folks from coming up over this sidewalk to get in there. But yes, we do have plans to secure.
Okay.
True. And to make it look nice.
Of course.
With the campus.
It's, yeah, it's hard to be nice.
Yep. We've also started working on, this is in the CIP for next year, we started working on Patsy Cline Theater seating. We've reached out to a vendor, and they're going to come out and do laser measurements to see, based on how seating is, these seats are obviously from the 70s. And so based on what seating looks like now, they'll be able to tell us what kind of numbers we can get in there. We currently have about 1,280 something seats, I think, and so we'll try to be close to that. But once we get that information from them, we'll be able to get a mock-up. They do have samples of seats too that we'll be able to look at. They'll provide us with a budget estimate, and then we anticipate the WEF looking, trying to look at a capital campaign to raise funds to help with the project as well, so.
That includes carpeting.
Yes, carpeting and seating. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I should have put that. But yes, it does, we do want to do carpeting as well.
Yep.
And so we're looking on that. And then finally, Daniel Morgan, their football fields, you know, as you know, we, we got that football field up to speed. We installed scoreboard, sprinkler system to keep the grass going. They are looking, their next desire to add to that is a small concession stand and restrooms. You can see they currently use the Johnny Baloo's during the football season, and so we'd like to change that and give them an opportunity to maybe make some revenue at the games from a concession stand. Right now, they, they break out a table and chairs and do stuff, but they'd like to have something a little more functional. So we are looking into that. The Daniel Morgan PTO wants to participate, and they have some goals for it as well, and so they're looking at ways that they can participate. Tony met with the administration today to talk about their vision of what they might want to see, and he's going to go back and meet with their PTO. And so we'll work with them on it. We'll gather all their input and see what we can do. We do have some logistic. Go ahead.
Good opportunity to connect to the conversation we had in June about athletics and activities and, you know, that really indicating in the spring, there's a desire to have soccer at the middle school level, girls and boys soccer teams. So I'd really like to see that come to fruition in '27. Talked to Frederick County as well. They're also pursuing that as well, so that we'd have at least four middle schools that can play each other, et cetera. If they were going to go with us, that'd be great. But it would add more reason to have bathrooms and concession stands for the fans, et cetera.
We do, I just mentioned it, we do have some logistical challenges getting connected to sewer and to getting water fed to, to the concession stand and stuff. So, but we'll figure it. We'll figure it out. We started, just kind of hammering through that a little bit today. But we'll work on it and get through those challenges. And then the final project that we are working on, that's the wrestling room that Daniel Morgan has. It's actually in the Five Six Gym, and it's on the elevated platform in that gym. They have actually taken a classroom out of commission and are going to turn that into a wrestling room for practice. And we have ordered mats to fill that room, and then we're going to remove the mats from this area, and they are going to turn that into, both schools will share that as a health room, health, PE room, where they'll have elliptical machines and bicycles and stuff for the kids to learn about exercise and that kind of thing. So we ordered the mats, $14,400 worth of wrestling mats and stuff, and so we'll get that, our team, my maintenance team will install that in late October, right about the time wrestling season begins for them. So our hope is that we'll have it installed very soon, very soon.
Okay. Any questions about projects?
You're done?
Well, this is a really small project, but I keep thinking when I drive up behind Haley and around about that letter we saw about handicap parking, and I still don't see any signage. And I think it would be complicated for a handicapped person to know where to go, because you don't have to go Jefferson Street and around to park. And the only signage I see is on the directional sign right at the student entrance, and it indicates that the handicap parking is, you know, to the right. So when basketball season comes and we have these people coming, they need to know how to get around to the back.
So you mean directional signs, not, not just, not, not actually additional spots?
No, no.
You just want directional signs?
How to get there.
Oh, okay.
Because you can't go.
Yeah, we have, right. We do have, yeah, we have three areas of handicap park, accessible parking. One is on the sidewalk, against the sidewalk on Jefferson Street where that bus turnout was right before the circle. And then along the back, we flip those signs where the buses load in the back, and they become handicap spots.
Yeah, but if you don't know it's there.
Correct. You're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. And then, and then on that extension off of the circle, there's more handicap spots up there. But as far as directional signage.
And if you're going to the basketball game, use those. There's no ramps.
That might be, I don't know, I don't disagree with you, Mary. I just wonder if, because that, most everybody goes down was the Hamley Ave or, Hamley Boulevard, I always get those two reviews. And so if you're there, I can't imagine how signs would get you all the way to the other side.
That's what I was trying to say.
So I almost wonder if it's better for like a Maggie, a Candelene, you know, push.
Marketing push.
Marketing push to just blast it out so that people see it and understand there are handicap spots behind the gym.
Because if you go in that way, there's no, no obstacles.
There's no, yeah.
Right.
Although, how many spaces are back there?
Not many, around four or five.
Yeah, and sometimes our basketball team in particular pulls in big crowds.
It's for drop-off.
Yeah, they use it as a drop-off, but I know those four or five go quickly during basketball season.
Sometimes they go before we can flip the sign.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a good solution.
I don't either.
For that. But I do think maybe we could get Maggie on this to, to help, to help the community understand.
By the time you get up there, you're like, I gotta turn on.
Yeah, and especially if you're from a visiting team.
And I think he was on that letter.
I think you're right. And so how would you know, like, I have to go to a different street, like, it doesn't make, we know, because we live in Winchester.
At the same time, I don't know that I want to put a handicap, a handicap parking this way in front of the campus.
Yeah, you don't want to.
On Valley Avenue.
The Hamley Trust may arrest you.
Well, maybe if you are code perfection on every game, like notice if you need handicap access, here's the map.
Yeah.
Well, we can look at that. We can also talk, we might be able to talk to Mark Timmons on the, on the ticket purchase when you go online. And there's maybe something that you're going to. He said you need a handicap seating, you probably need parking as well. So we, maybe we can, I'll talk to him and see if he can do something about that. So we'll look into that.
Yep, sure will. Thank you.
So this, again, this is a celebration slide, folks. You know, we've had a rough, ever since COVID, last four or five years, we've, we've had difficulty in filling positions that, you know, transportation is a very specific skill level. And with Jason's leadership and with the board's support, I'm telling you, competitive pay has just made a difference. And so I want to thank you. My coordinators want to thank you. You can see these numbers. I mean, 45 out of 47, we had, we had 46. Unfortunately, we didn't make the cut, but we're getting there. We're too shy. All of our band positions are filled, plus our subpositions. All custodial positions are filled. Almost every food service position is filled. And one of them, the one that's not filled is because someone left. We worked for it beginning. And so we have two management positions that are out in our schools on the food service side, folks that are going to retire at the end of the year. So we'll be filling those up hopefully internally, but if not, we'll reach out to the market and see what we can get. But again, these numbers are just fantastic, and I've heard from schools that say, the service is a ton better. They give us the resources and we can, we can make it happen. So, so thank you for your support. And again, Jason, your leadership on getting our pay scales to where they needed to be and allowing our, the support staff to get on board. So thank you for that.
That's good. I have a quick question. If I could scroll back to slide six.
Sure.
The early childhood rooms. That's two rooms?
I took pictures of a couple. There were four, I think.
There are actually four rooms. I'm just looking at that $116,000 for furniture seems like really high, but if there's four, I was assuming there was two rooms.
Paying is the one.
Well, it's.
There are four total classrooms in addition to the therapy rooms, so a fifth full classroom that is supported in addition to our reading service providers spaces that are virtual, are the classrooms, of course, require specialized equipment. So that includes our PT, OT, speech rooms, sensory rooms, those types of things. So the four classrooms, yes, worth a bulk, but we have four additional rooms that are also.
Okay, that makes, the numbers crunch out better that way. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? All right. Thank you so much. Next up, we have, oh, you're, it's you again?
Yes. Okay, just a couple of slides here, two quick slides, three, three quick slides. We are in the process of releasing the RFP for the facility study at Garland Corals Elementary School. And as you'll recall, in January, when a couple of y'all just came on board, we met with city council, and that meeting highlighted the need for a review of the Corals infrastructure and the campus, and what we may or may not be able to do with that moving forward. And the city budgeted, in their budget this year, funds for an architectural engineering study of Garland Corals. Again, this is not a design of a new school. This is to study the campus, to try and figure out what's the best way to replace that 75-year-old building. And so I provided you with a slide that just kind of goes over the objectives of our RFP. We're going to do everything from building and site, as well as hazmat, and environmental assessment of the site. We will get them to confirm what programs are expected to be in that building in the future, and what, we will get them to work with administrators and teachers as part of our committee to, to look at what that school might look like. Engage in the public as needed, but really that last bullet is where we want them to focus on, and that is provide us with some sort of advice and recommendation of whether or not we go full renovation, maybe a partial renovation and a partial replacement, maybe we replace the entire building. And then at the same time, as we've talked about in the past, increasing that school size would allow us an opportunity to move the fifth graders back from Daniel Morgan Intermediate School back to the elementary level where we feel it's more appropriate. And so that'll be part of it as well. So, so we will be interviewing. We're going to be releasing this RFP hopefully by the end of this week, if not very early next week. We'll issue that out to vendors. We'll start receiving. We'll give them about 30 days to get their proposals together. We'll have a selection committee and Mr. Chair. We would like board participation in that selection committee, as well as meeting with the architects. I think it'd be good to have board representation. So over the next month or so, if you can offer the board members, if that's somebody that might be interested in participating in this project, that would be great. We would hope that we could get work begin in November and wrap it up in the spring of next year with a final report to the board sometime in April, May, Tom, Frank. I'll, I'll work with the selected vendor on the exact, still every day and stuff for that. But that's our plan right now. No action is required. Just wanted to inform you and let you know that I was going to go out to bid, and, and we did want to get some more participation.
Yes, absolutely. I don't, I don't anticipate us having a hard time getting more participation on this. It's going to be a big deal, so. Might be fun, as Mary whispers to me, so. Please reach out to me if you guys are interested, and I will make sure and get those, those names.
Expect a recommendation for one of those three scenarios to emerge from this, or are they simply going to outline the cost benefit?
I think they will probably do that of each of those and then allow us to make a decision. Yeah, yeah. I'm sure they will make a recommendation of their, their, you know, based on what they see, based on the data that they gather and the information they gather from the, from the building. But yes, I anticipate that they will make solid recommendations, but provide us with present contribution.
So when we visit Daniel Morgan, or, you know, we're talking about space that potentially can be for Melvin Road. Is there enough space for six, seven, and eight active people at this right now?
Yeah, that, that campus is almost square footage-wise bigger than Hannah's. Amazing how big that is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just like every nook and cranny. Like, oh my God, more space. But yeah, we, we count the classrooms up there.
Exciting, and I can't overstate personally how strongly I feel about bringing the fifth grader back down to the elementary level. Even though my kids have already gone through the system, that was, that was the moment where it was the toughest when you see your little fifth grader going off to be going to middle school, you know. But also developmentally and all that as well, I hope we're able to accomplish that. Okay, you good? All right. Thanks, Seth.
Thank you, Seth.
All right, Dr. Van Heen, you'll tell us about that. All right, Dr. Van Heen, you'll tell us about that a little.
All right. So the data this year is somewhat trickling out. Typically in years past, we've done one big data show in October and it included everything. This year, the data is just coming out slower than it has in the past. So we're going to trickle it out to y'all and to the press as well. This is public data. You've seen a small article in the newspaper already. So tonight, we're going to be discussing three primary buckets. One is your, what's called your SOL pass rates, the percent of students who are proficient in reading, math, history, and science. We'll look at that in a number of different ways, different subgroups, trends over time. We'll also look at chronic absenteeism, which is a huge celebration for Winchester this year, you'll see. And then the third bucket is we do have some, some data around college and career readiness, which is, you know, AP testing, dual enrollment, and CTE indicators. So that's what we'll get into tonight. And then I'm also going to share at the end some new proposals coming from the Virginia Department of Education and our current state superintendent that we found out about, we being the superintendents, found out about it on a couple Mondays ago, only two days prior to the state board meeting. And I'll get into that at the end. But overall, I'm very pleased with where we stand in our performance, and I think you'll see that. So the first thing we're going to look at is, you know, we, we look at data in two primary ways. One is trend over time, right? So are we getting better over time? Do we do better than last year, three years, five years, whatever? Here you see three years. The second thing we do is we look at comparative data. So you always want to take your data and say, how do we compare to other school districts who are similar in demographics to Winchester public schools? And so you'll see that as well. So what you have here in this executive summary is the three-year trend of all the different ways you can slice and dice our data. Overall, we have a real positive trend in, in most of the areas. So we'll start with the most exciting one, which is our math. You'll see all throughout this presentation, we are a very strong math district. We have a lot to be proud of in math and we, we outperform other people quite a bit in math. So I'm very pleased with that. Over the last three years, we've gone up nine percentage points in math, and that's for all kids, from fifty-eight to sixty-seven percent. History is also very strong. Again, a steady trend in history, going up a total of six percentage points in the last three years. And then science and reading had a peak and a valley, right? So we're up in three years, but we're down year over year in science and reading. So science took a huge jump last year, a ten percent jump, and then it settled back down to fifty-six percent. There's some real explanatory reasons. There are two things. One is at the eighth grade level, we have always had an accelerated eighth grade science pathway where seventh graders could take, accelerated seventh graders could take the eighth grade SOL. And then they would take earth science, which is a high school credit in, in eighth grade. This past year, the state said we were not allowed to do that. And so when you go down that road, you get this double whammy of students who are going to pass the SOL. And when you remove that, then you lose those kids. We had over two hundred kids that did not take the eighth grade SOL that typically would have, that would most likely all have passed. So you do the math on that. That's the primary reason the science did, did, did drop. And then our English reading is, is basically stable, right? We've had a one percent gain. We went up a little bit, came back down. And we'll get into some of those details a little bit later. But reading is still something that, you know, as a school district, with a third of our students who are learning English for the first time is always going to, is always a challenge for us, right? And so, and one hand, it's not surprising. On the other hand, you know, we, we always want to focus on getting better in reading because we all know that reading is, is really important, right, for lifetime success. So that's your look at all kids. Then we get into our subgroups. Got some great celebrations with our subgroups. Our Hispanic students, students had some mixed progress. They had a one percent increase in reading, but they had an eight percent increase in social science and history, nine percent in math, kind of mirroring the average, and then a five percent increase in science, okay? Really strong with our economically disadvantaged students. Almost sixty percent of our students are qualified as economically disadvantaged. Does anyone remember the difference between economically disadvantaged and free and reduced lunch? I can see in the next chart.
Good. What was the poverty level?
So economically disadvantaged means you're directly certified with the Department of Social Services, which means you're receiving TANF, you're receiving SNAP benefits, your foster care, your, your, your family is directly certified. Your, your, we know your name and your family. Free or reduced lunch, because we're a CEP school division, is an estimate of what you might call the working port, right? Those who don't qualify for SNAP benefits, but would still qualify for free or reduced meals. So typically for us, like our, our economically disadvantaged percentage is fifty-eight point eight, but our free and reduced lunch estimated percentage is about eighty-five percent. So that's the difference there. You'll see some more of that in other charts. But for, so, you know, more than half our kids are in this bucket, right? And so they did, they've done really well over the last three years. And so a lot to be proud of with our students coming from economically disadvantaged, only thirteen points in history, twelve points in math, nine points in science, and eight points in reading. So all three areas, they outpace the general population in Winchester. English learners, again, reading was pretty stubborn. And so it's very low pass rate with our English learners, of twenty-two percent, up to twenty-six and down to twenty. But again, so they have a minus two percent, somewhat negligible at that level. But I do want to just read to you our statistics that I gathered here this afternoon. Just to put in context, like, when we talk about English learners, I always use the analogy, like, if, if you were dropped into Russia tomorrow and asked to take a Russian exam, how well would you do, Skip?
Not well.
And Skip's a very bright kid. He's super smart, right? So this is, and he would not do so well. So we have to remember that this is the reality and it's no disparagement or about their intellect or anything else. It's just they literally do not speak English. On top of that, many of our students who speak English as a second language or are learning come from situations where they weren't formally educated. And so many of them don't even read or write in their native language. So that's another kind of barrier, right? So there's a lot of headwinds there. Here's some quick stats for you on our English learners. Of our four thousand students, one thousand one hundred and thirty-six are English learners, okay? Then in that bucket, you have what's called the, we call it the WIDA levels, which is your, a level of your English proficiency. Level one is the lowest, level four is the highest. Like, level four, you're about to exit, right? You know, you know some good English, like, we're about to exit you and you're, you're about ready. Forty percent of our English learners are level one, almost half. So they, they have like, they have like zero chance of passing a reading test. Another twenty-two percent are level two, thirty percent are level three. Only eight percent of our English learners are level fours, okay? So within that bucket, there's a, there's a variance in their English proficiency, right? And so we're always cautious. We never want to have low standards for kids. We never want to say, you know, make an excuse or anything like that. But that is just the reality for our English learners in a district with thirty-two percent English learners.
Is there any correlation between the, the numbers of second language learners? You know, you have this up and then a dip and then up. Is there an increase in English language learners that might account for the dip that we're seeing?
This is the, we, we've been going up like two to three percent a year in your English ELL population, not a huge increase, but I haven't done that over time.
But if you have an influx of newcomers.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna.
At the lower end, absolutely, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, ten years to be proficient in that.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Yeah. And so not just reading, but taking a science test with all that vocabulary, right, is a cha, is a challenge.
I suspect they do well in science because of more of the cognitiveness.
Yeah, graphs and things like that.
So Jason, you've mentioned eight percent are at the level four.
Yeah.
And yet twenty percent are demonstrating pass rates in English?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it. So you, you hope that eight percent is all passing.
Right.
And then we to level three, some of those are passing, some are not, but.
It adds some context to these numbers.
That's right, yeah.
Of the forty percent, there's level one, like, where is the average student in that group starting when they enter Winchester Public Schools? Like, is that, they've gone through all of it, or is that also like, a lot of it could be entering in high school and then averaging it up from there?
That's a great question. They're coming at all different points in the journey. So, you know, they might come in kindergarten, they might come when they're sixteen, right? And so, you know, when they come at the upper level, like seventh through twelfth grade, it's even that much harder. It's easier to learn a language when you're younger, right? So when you come here directly from El Salvador, you're, excuse me, sixteen, and you know zero English, it's going to be really challenging for you to make it. All right. So with our English learners, reading, of course, is always, is a challenge. History, we had a twelve-point increase from twenty-four percent to thirty-six percent. Math, as you can imagine, would be the highest thing they do well in, numbers instead of letters, a ten-point increase there. Science did see a thirteen-point increase as well with our EL. So some good news with our English learners as far as increasing their reading, their proficiency rates. Students with disabilities also had positive overall gains. You can see that there, ten for history, eight for science, seven for math, and a one percent increase for reading, so pretty stable with reading. Big celebration here with our multiracial students. Many of you know that over the last three or four years, that's been an area that we've kind of dug into that data and said, you know, why are our students of multiracial families not performing as well? And, you know, we, we saw massive gains here, nineteen points in history, fifteen in science, eleven in reading, and nine percent in math. Our black students saw some mixed progress, fairly stable in reading at one percent. History had a decline, nine percentage points over the three years, even though they did have an increase. So they went from forty-six to fifty-four and then a sharp decline to thirty-seven. And math, they had a three percent overall gain. Science overall had a gain, but again, similar to history, they had a big jump last year from thirty-nine to sixty-two percent and then a big drop. So very erratic there with our, our African-American students overall.
So I just have a question. Can I classify someone as black versus multiracial? Like, my kids are three-quarters black. So would they be considered like multiracial or would they be black?
It would depend on how you, as a family, registered them, if self-declared. And so that's another piece of the data is like, we don't, we don't tell people how they should identify. So it is based on their, their self-identification. I can tell you, because we, in the three years, we were looking at, well, who are our multiracial kids, you know? What races are they? And the eighty percent of our multiracial kids are black, white, right? One of the parents is black, one of the parents is white, or some mix of that. Yeah. All right. And then this table here is by grade level, by test, right? You can see the three-year trend there. And so, you know, some, some big wins here, seventh grade, fourteen percent gain in reading, six percent in eighth grade, and some, some good things happening there. This one to me is the one I'm, you know, and this fifth grade, of course, is transition year as well, going up to the intermediate school. But this is one that, you know, the third grade, we talked about internally, you know, it's kind of this really important year, right? It, it's kind of the, the transition from learning to read to reading to learn, right? So starting in fourth grade, we expect you to be able to read. So we give you the history book, the science book, and say, read it so you can learn science. And if you're not reading so well, then not only are you struggling to read, but you're struggling to learn science and everything else. So Jake's putting together a small task force to really unpack, why are we seeing a downward trend? You know, you could say minus four points.
So they changed the test?
They did change the test, but at the same time, the state's data is going up. And so there's other factors there that make me say, let's, let's, um, let's unpack that a little bit, so.
Yeah. So I want to point out, so I met with Jason, not specifically about this, but we talked about it. And, you know, that's a big number that jumps out at me. And so I just wanted to mention, you know, before the board that, you know, I think that it's important to the board potentially to take like specific note of that and to make sure that we're kind of engaging continuously with, with you all. And if there's like a task force, just to make sure that we're continually linked in to that. Yeah, what did I do?
Okay, that's what we should be doing, I think.
And I mean, with, with reading at third grade being, you have, there's a lot of literature around, like, what happens when you're not doing so well in third grade, you know? And so what, what big hairy audacious goal can we have to really bring to bear on that second and third grade mark? It's important. So we'll, we'll, we'll unpack it a little bit and see what we can find out.
The reading makes, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, you have to remember that each of these numbers is a different cohort of.
Absolutely.
Students, a different mix.
With the reading being low, almost makes me wonder if all the technology that we have is skewing us away from reading, even our university students, you know? If you want to do a calculus lesson on whatever, you don't really have to read the book. You probably should, but you don't have to because somebody's made a YouTube video of it. Or even most digital textbooks now, if you click on the little speaker, it'll tell you what is written there. Or, and that's great for people who have accessibility issues and they can't necessarily read it. They can hear. I just wonder if all the technology we're surrounded by is tempting us away from the written word and we're just seeing it in our kids first. I don't know.
Well, I think that's a good argument, but I also, I have issues with the test.
Oh, for sure.
Because some of the questions are asking analysis, and we're talking about eight-year-olds. And I'm like, how about we learn to read and read well and widely first and then put that in? So the sample questions that I saw, I thought were much too, you know, for, for a child who probably, like, some kids show up in reading kindergarten, but some, and a second grade, they're finally cracking the code. And then we move right into these heavy analytical questions, which in my opinion are not reading. That's not why I read. I read for pleasure, I read for imagination, I read for a whole lot of other reasons. And so to take eight-year-olds and get them away from that essential practice, I mean, my research shows that they need to find a good, serious book, like Magic Tree House, and read as many of those as they can so they're exposed to a wide range of vocabulary so that, I mean, I'm just, I have issues with the test. I'm not sure it's a reading comprehension test at, at bottom.
You're a hundred percent. Thank you for stating that.
And they should be reading a lot, even in school, because if they're out of school, they're going to be on screen soon. And so they need to.
And reading things that they like, because if they don't find joy in reading now, there's no chance in the seventh grade when they're doing even more advanced things, because they're going to enjoy that.
Two, two reports came out over the summer. One is that like twenty percent of adults are readers. And the other was that parents of small children don't read to their children because they think it's boring. The parents are. So we have those two things working against us.
Mr. Radman, were you about to say something?
It was a, it was a half-baked thought.
We'll make it, it happens.
So I'm looking over your shoulder. So if, if that were the case, though, we would be seeing more of like a negative trend, you know, I'm sort of just.
You mean, progress, like this one?
Well, so we're seeing a negative trend in third graders, but we're not seeing a similar trend in fourth or fifth or something like that. So I think that that's where, I just wanted to reiterate how important I think it is for us to stay.
Statistically, these, these numbers aren't that far apart.
Right.
You know, we're talking a point or two here and there. We're in.
And I'm not disagreeing that the test is almost a flaw, right? My point is that we are continuing to engage you all and the group, if you have a task force, because I think that's critical. Rather than just saying, hey, okay, these numbers are going down in the third grade, you know?
Well, we don't want to have them not learn to read.
No, right. And just to put it in perspective, so a four percent drop on a cohort of about three hundred kids, ten percent is thirty kids, five percent is fifteen kids. So a four percent drop is about fifteen kids. So fifteen more kids make it. So fifteen more kids make it, and, and, you know, there's, there's a line, and, you know, you're right below, there's like, every year, it's like, who gets over the line? So, but we, we do want to do due diligence, and I, I agree quite frankly with everything that's been said. And there's moments, I'm old enough now, where I'm just like, sometimes I get tired of playing the game, and I question the utility at the same time. You know, we, we, we have to play the game, I mean, it's not our choice necessarily, and we want to show that our kids can read. So it's, it's all in, I guess is what I'm saying, yeah. But overall, nothing to, the sky's not falling in Winchester, guys. I mean, let's be honest, we've got lots of green here, you know, the reading E O C down one point, that's negligible, that's not something to worry about. Even reading down four, and grade five down three, I wish they were going up, but, but, you know, we'll maybe rebound next year, and we'll be having a different conversation. So, and that can change in one year, depending on the cohort that comes through, or all kinds of different factors. Math, you can see some strong data here, only one area went down a little bit. And I do know there was concerted push last year with our seventh graders to advance them into advanced math, so it's likely that the denominator here, the number of students who actually took the seventh grade math, was a little bit lower, because they were accelerated, but some strong gains in, in sixth grade in particular, fourth grade, algebra one. Science, we've already unpacked the reason for eighth grade science. And then history, Virginia Studies, civics at the eighth grade went down six points, but they have historically been pretty strong, so again, I'm not too worried about that. Mary, you'll be very pleased, but the reason you do not see world history up here is because they, we went all in on what's called a task-based assessment.
Oh, those are the.
Yeah, and so I think ninety-five percent of the students passed their performance-based assessment, and so, as you would expect, when the kids were invested in the work, and actually had to do something and create something, they did a better job than having to sit for a world history test. So they did not take the S O L in world history last year.
And now it will be their verified credit.
It will be their verified credit, that's right. Any questions on that analysis? Okay. Alright, now let's look at our, our famous scorecard here, so we get into, you know, we always want to compare to others like us, so what does success look like, right? I mean, we get a number, is that good, bad, or ugly, right? So what we have here is, we have two groups. One is our affinity group. Affinity group means other school districts that are similar to Winchester public schools, and we define that as cities first, and then we look at their E L percentage and their economically disadvantaged percentage. And so if you're new to this scorecard, these are our affinity group schools right here, Harrisonburg, Manassas, Manassas Park, Roanoke, Lynchburg, Charlottesville, and Alexandria. So these are school districts with similar challenges, similar demographics, et cetera. And then, of course, we also compare locally, because that's what the Winchester Star will do, right? So we have to compare to them as well, even though we all know the local comparison is nothing like Winchester, I mean, not even in the same ballpark, right? Green means we outperformed that district in that particular area. White means we did not outperform them, so green is good. You can see in reading, we outperformed most of our affinity group, none of the local. Math, fantastic. I mean, across the board, the only one that beat us is Clark County, okay? Science, I outperformed four in our affinity group here. And then again, history ran the table almost here, including the state average. We were at the state average in history, so very strong in history. We don't have the, this data yet, so we'll bring this back to you once that's public. Chronic absenteeism, huge success here, had lower chronic absenteeism than anyone in our affinity group and locally. I really attribute that to Jen's leadership. You know, you see all the things we do on Facebook to incentivize attendance and all that stuff, but then also, we were very forceful with our families about making up attendance. So if you, if you're out, you gotta make up your time, and we could recover those attendance days, and so we did a great job with that. And then to me, this is, you know, what it's all about, like, when we sent Skip across the stage in June or May, we want him to be ready for college, right? We want him to be ready to go into the workforce, and so these are our college and career indicators. A lot of green there, guys. C T E completers, that means that you have taken more than one class within a sequence, not just random C T E classes, but you've taken two in a pathway. So seventy-two percent of our graduates have done that, or had done that. Frederick County did great there as well, so you can see there at seventy-four. And then credentials earned, so they're graduating with a credential in hand that's meaningful, and they can go use that in the real world. We outperformed everyone in that one.
Nobody close.
Not even close, yeah.
AP's scorecard frames.
Very good with A P tests as well, so, you know, we offer, and you saw that maybe in the U S News World Report article in the Star, like, the breadth of curriculum that we offer at Hanley is, is really great for college applications and for college preparatory work. Our kids have access to the classes they need to be competitive, to go to really quality schools, and then they take their A P tests, so twenty, about twenty-eight percent of our students have taken at least one A P test. And then dual enrollment, thirty-three percent of our students have taken at least one dual enrollment class.
Those are kind of amazing.
Yeah, something to be really proud of. Alright, any questions there? Okay, one more data thing, and then we'll get into the new stuff. We, we take the same scorecard, so, you know, think about this, and now we're gonna go deeper into each of them by subgroup, and we won't spend a ton of time here, but it is another way to look at the data. And so this is just reading now. And so now, within reading, we know overall we did pretty well here, but how did we do in our subgroups, right? So you can see our English learners are below other people's English learners. That makes you scratch your head and say, whoa, but why are our English learners not performing at the same level of others? And so questions might be, well, how many Level fours do they have versus Level ones? That would be my first question. We have a lot of Level one English learners. The Manassas might have a lot of Level four English learners, right? So we don't know that data, so there's reasons behind the data, but you can see that there. Math, a lot of green again with math across subgroups, right? To me, one of the, this bottom row is always important to me, the economically disadvantaged row. Science, little hit or miss, again, we had, we had a down year in science, we know that, we'll come back from that next year. And then you'll see a lot of green with history. In history, you had three areas that were above the state average. That's always a win for Winchester to be above the state average. And then chronic absenteeism, a lot of green there. Again, the rest of this scorecard will populate once we have the data. All in all, you should be proud. I mean, we should all be very proud of the work that our teachers and, and school leaders do. We do right by our kids and families, we provide opportunities. I'm always just, you know, really pleased on graduation day when those kids walk across the stage with a vision for their life, they have a plan, they're going places, and that's because of the work that we do here in Winchester, and we should all be very proud of that. Alright, any questions there before we get into?
No, but that absenteeism through the, you want to low, no, we're not high.
Yes, low is good, low is good.
Wait a minute. These are backwards.
Okay, so I, I bring this to the board just to be aware of what's happening at the state level. And from what I understand, they do intend to make a decision on new cut scores in October that will be effective this school year, not even waiting another school year. I am concerned, I'll be, I'll be honest, I've called several people, I've talked to legislative officials and even state officials expressing my concerns, and I'm not alone. Most, not all the superintendents across the state are concerned about what's happening. So I want to, A, orient you to kind of the rationale from the point of view of the state superintendent and the, the state board, and that is primarily through this PowerPoint. Nope, wrong, no. This PowerPoint, okay? We're only gonna look at a few slides, but this is, you can digest this at your own leisure, but this is kind of, this was their presentation to the state board. So just like, I'm your superintendent, and I make recommendations to you, and you say yes or no, the state superintendent does the same thing. So this was her recommendation to the state board, and they will vote on this in the future. The primary thrust of what's happening can really be boiled down on slide five, okay? And so what's, what's happening here, and this is a national, in fact, you can go, there's a website called the Honesty Gap, alright? And so the framing of this issue is that states are not being truthful with families and their constituents. And the, the, it's based on the difference between the state proficiency score on the S O L and what's called the N A P, which is the National Assessment in Reading and Math. So this is what, you know, they're putting forward. So according to our proficiency rates, you know, we're about seventy percent proficient in the state of Virginia, however, our N A P scores are thirty, twenty-nine, forty, and the gap is what they call the honesty gap, okay? And that's the primary rationale, and what you're seeing is they, they want to raise the cut scores to match the N A P, so that they would be a one, almost a one-to-one correlation. And the theory of action would be that if we raise the standards, schools will perform better, teachers will work harder, I don't know, have magic in their backpack, I don't know, and, and then our scores would outperform the national scores. I will say, Virginia already outperformed the national average in N A P. So let's be clear, we're not underperforming the N A P in Virginia, we're already outperforming the N A P.
What's the African, African N A P assessment?
National assessment for education.
And how is that assessed? It's not, it's not an S O L test, but.
Yeah, great question. So it is a standardized test, schools get randomly selected, so last year, John Kerr was randomly selected. It is through the U S Department of Education, and they, they, they being a team, shows up on campus with N A P shirts on, and they grab sampling of students, and it's randomly assigned, and they test them on the N A P. You know, there's a lot of, kind of, I mean, it's a, it's a broad sampling across the country, but, you know, it has no, there's no skin in the game for our kids or for us. We don't get the data, we don't get to know how kids did. I've never seen a N A P test, I've never seen a N A P question, I probably could find it if I really looked, but it's never been the standard by which we've assessed education at the state level. And so, you know, this is kind of a new way of raising.
No, this is rhetorical sleight of hand, this, the honesty gap, because the N A P, the N A P site, I'm sorry, I swear to my own every morning, and I did it in record time this morning, because I'm just so angry about this. So the N A P site says, it should be noted that the N A P proficient achievement level does not represent grade level proficiency as determined by other assessment standards, for example, state or district assessments. And their definition of proficient is above basic, we're not talking about basic, basic skills, we're talking about proficient students can apply their knowledge to new situations and real-world scenarios, and it's a criterion reference test, which means it's testing a set amount of information, which could be different than our criteria, which is set by the State Department of Education, so I'm very angry. They're basically, it's misrepresentation is what, what that honesty gap is.
And to name it the honesty gap, like, really, come on, that's rhetorical.
And when I was teaching in nineteen ninety-eight, S O Ls came in, I said, what, why don't we just look at the N A P scores, and we can see how kids are doing? And then the states said, oh no, we have to have our own measure, we have to have our own standards, we have to have, so they're, they're, it's not fair what they are proposing here.
Thank you, Mary.
Sorry. Age, age has its privileges, I'm really mad about that.
A lot of people are really mad about this.
It's, it's, and the, the public will not understand it, other than this chart.
It's sleight of hand, jargon, and.
Sophistry, whatever.
No, I, thank you, Mary.
And our kids are gonna, and our teachers are gonna be punished with this clinical move, which is what I see.
Well, and so, thank you, you said it way better than I did, so I appreciate that. But you need to know why, where is this coming from, right? And this is where it's coming from. I'm gonna skip all the way to the end and just show you the, you can read all the methodology and, and all that stuff later, it's public for the public to read as well. But essentially, here's where we're at, slide twenty-four. Alright, so here's, here's what's happening, right? So here, this, the second column is where we currently are. Proficient on all of our S O Ls is four hundred, advanced is five hundred, okay? The recommendation from the committee that was established is this line, this bucket here, okay? Anything you see in yellow has been changed by the state superintendent, so the committee recommended four forty-six, the state superintendent says, no, I'm recommending four forty-nine, just a little bit higher. So this final bucket, and everything you see in yellow is what has been changed by the state superintendent, is what will be recommended to the state board for approval. And so you can see now proficiency is in the mid-four hundreds, all the way up to the high school of four seventy-nine, alright? Math is, you know, ranges four thirty. So a couple of things to keep in mind. Number one, last legislative session, the House and the Senate and the governor signed a law that says if you are in the top twenty-five percent of performing math students in fifth, sixth, or seventh grade, you must be automatically put into advanced math. That number right now is a four twenty-five. So we have a law on the books that's requiring us to advance kids in math at a four twenty-five already, which, that happened overnight, nobody knew about it. Now you're gonna be putting kids in advanced math who are, by your own definition, not proficient in math. And so now we're gonna double accelerate them, skip math content in many cases, and put them in advanced math when by our new definition of proficiency, they're not even proficient in the current math, right? So that's one issue. Another big issue, the biggest issue that I see is graduation rates. So Mary mentioned verified credits, students have to have three verified credits to graduate, reading, math, and science. If we raise the E O C to four seventy-nine, our reading pass rate goes from in the mid-seventies down into the thirties, okay? So graduation rates, this won't happen this year, because all, most of our seniors have got their verified credits, Skip's got his, he's good to go, he's not worried about it. But the sophomores and juniors who are getting their verified credits are gonna use new cut scores, and that will have an effect on graduation rates in the future. If you somehow change the graduation rate, say, we don't need verified credits anymore, because I can't imagine Virginia having a fifty percent graduation rate, I mean, that would be, imagine? I mean, I just can't even fathom that. Then by your own definition, you might be saying, we have a ninety percent graduation rate, but a thirty percent reading rate, we're graduating kids that can't read. You know, it's like, that doesn't make sense to me either, okay? So that has some challenges. And then the third challenge, of course, is our new performance matrix for schools. And we anticipate of our seven schools, five will be on track and two will be off track based on this year's data, okay? Under this new model, all seven schools will be off track or needs improvement, and that will be right throughout the state. And, and so what kind of support would we get, and what does that say to the public about our schools, would be one of the challenges I have. And so this is, just for your information, potentially this will affect this year's scores, this year's students. And then the last thing, and I'll open it up for comments, we ran the numbers for what it would be here in Winchester, and this final column here is where we would land with, if the new, if we use last year's data with the new cut scores. So Virginia Avenue would have a fourteen percent reading rate, you know, you can read it down, the highest one is Frederick Douglass at forty-seven, you know, most are in the thirties, twenties, and thirties. You know, you look at the high school, that reading rate goes to thirty percent, math rate goes to twenty-one percent. And so that, that's drastic effect on, on scores, so I'll stop talking, I know you're chomping at the bit there.
No, I, I didn't want to lose it, so the point of this, right, is they want to give us more money.
Yeah.
You guys really are doing what we really want to give you, a lot more money so you can continue to improve.
Of course.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's exactly right, yeah, yeah.
I can't wait.
When is this getting voted on?
Potentially in October.
So we have to go to the school board, doesn't have to go to the...
The state board.
State board, where you're going to...
Do you know if there is dissent or disagreement? Do you know anything about the political environment of that board and the likelihood of this happening?
We did, some of us watched the board meeting. They were very receptive. The state board generally was very receptive to that presentation. I can tell you that a lot of different advocacy groups are mobilizing to express their concerns. I know the superintendent group has done so and has already given a public comment. You know, so I think VEA is doing the same thing, the teacher association and others. So, but yeah, it seems to be well on its way, and it will not surprise me if it's approved in October.
This strikes me as a very thinly veiled attempt to systematically dismantle public education by fostering public outcry at teachers and administrators not doing what they're supposed to be doing. That's, I, I can see that. I'm not sure anybody who doesn't sit in a chair like the ones that we all sit in see that. It's very sad to me, and that's, that's, there is a political movement, I feel like, nationally right now, that that's their number one priority is to do a way of public education.
To what political end?
To save their own tax dollars.
Yeah, there's three members on that school board who are aligned with private education.
There you go.
Three.
They just don't believe in public education because if you can, if you can pay for it yourself, you know, why are we...
It's such a minority perspective nationwide.
It is.
I know. Yeah. And so I think it behooves those of us who truly believe and love public education to make sure we're having conversations with people and explaining the value of public education. I know Jason does a very good job of this. When he's given the opportunity, he takes it to, to, you know, scream from the mountaintops really what the value of public education is. And because it's being attacked, I really feel from, from everything.
Well, the irony is that NADP is, is run by the Federal Department of Education, and we all know where that is headed. So they won't even have the statistics if they get what they want, which is to dismantle it.
This is the point.
They won't have anything to look at to see how anybody's doing it. It's a sleight of hand.
Yes, yeah, I agree. It's smoke and mirrors. It's, 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 I don't know, it's a spin job of epic proportions to make schools that are performing and doing what they're supposed to be doing now and that column in the right to look like they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And therefore, why are we funding it?
The other thing that kind of angers me is that we now have 20 years of standardized testing. And when you look at NADP scores, we haven't done a whole lot to improve those. So their experiment has failed, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of putting kids through testing with the idea that everybody would get better. I think everybody can get better. I just don't think that our money should be spent in that direction. The other thing that the Institute of Educational Statistics, also where the National Department of Education show, is that since testing began, administrative numbers have increased by 80% because while teacher and student numbers have remained very flat, which means what we've done is build a huge bureaucracy around this testing industry and use money that could have been better spent on our students and our teachers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So now they're gonna declare, they flipped the table where we would say, well, your experiment isn't working based on this, and they're saying, well, you're lying. You're lying that your kids are doing well, so.
Ben, were you gonna say something? Something happy?
That's me. Well, so, Ray, so are we required to take the SOLs? What if we say, hey, we're not gonna take the SOLs? What happens?
Yes, yes, we are required. Individual families can opt out in Virginia.
Right.
So, you know, and we do have a handful of families that say, I don't want to take them. Not many, I'm talking less than five. So, you know, it is, it would be tied to funding, it would be tied to a lot of...
So it's not just like verified credits? It would be, the state would be like, well...
Well, then you're not, yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll conclude with this. You know, I've been doing this now almost 30 years, and I cut my teeth on No Child Left Behind. And so Mary makes a really important point, like, this idea that accountability was gonna make schools better, I'm not sure has come to fruition. And certainly the data hasn't said that. We're not at 100% proficiency in the last 25 years, for sure.
What any education person would say, you know, they're gonna...
Right, yeah. For the things we just talked about, where the answer is...
But we can have students who need certifications, they can get a job.
And I think at the same time, you know, the, the type of learning that we're asking our kids to do and the type of teaching we're asking our teachers to do has, to some extent, maybe to a large extent, kind of sucked the life of joy out of school in general. And I really, you know, the older I get, the more I question the utility of it all, especially in 2025. I mean, there's one pundit out there who'd say something like, we're training kids to do what AI can do perfectly. So what's our human advantage, right? So what, how do we foster and develop the human advantage that our kids can have? But instead, we're, we're myopic on this standardization. And then every kid starts at a different point. So to expect the same level of proficiency from all kids, when I just gave you the numbers just on EL students, let alone students with a disability or students in poverty who come from different backgrounds, et cetera, is, is, is really challenging.
Well, you know, another irony is that I've read up on AI because we're all trying to figure out if they can use it in our classrooms. But the training they did of AI, they knew when they trained them that they could take all the knowledge and just dump it into a computer. But they didn't want the AI to be like that. They wanted it to have a generalizable knowledge. In other words, put problems before the computer so that it would have to pull and, and move things around, which is the way we should be teaching children as well, so that they have a generalizable, generalizable knowledge that they can apply to different situations instead of narrowly passing a test.
And thinking critically, right? And my mind, it almost makes me think, you know, are we, are we, as humans now, this is way higher than Winchester Public School Board needs to be thinking right now, but are we moving towards, going back towards things like the Socratic Seminars and, and producing philosophy majors? Because to your point, that's what the AI can't do yet. And that's the advantage that we have because our human minds can think about nuances and different scenarios and contents that produce different meanings. Yeah. Show, show me the next political candidate that wants to do away with the SOLs and they've got my vote right there.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's, well, it is what it is. I appreciate the robust dialogue. You know, my, my intention tonight was to educate not just the board, but our public about what is imminent, quite frankly. It's not just an idea. This is on the, on the docket to be passed and become reality very, very soon. And the implications that it has, not just for Winchester. The only, the only silver lining here is everyone's in the same boat, so, I mean, we're not gonna be alone. Everybody in the state will be plummeting in their pass rate, so.
But again, that's the point. Make public education nationwide look like it's trash because that gives...
And if you want to know what happens when you prioritize, look at Jilly because they did it there, and they're very, everything's expensive.
Oh, yeah.
And it...
I mean, it creates a bigger word, social stratification.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Jason, that was very important.
Yeah, you bet.
All right. Any last questions for Dr. Van Heembeek before we move on? Because that was our last report. Okay, hearing done, we will move into the need for a closed session. Melissa, would you please read 5A?
Pursuing Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Florida Virginia Motion of the Board Committee in Closed Session for the Purpose of Discussing Personnel Matters Including Perspective Candidates for Employment and the Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salary, Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointing or Employing Specifically Administrative Stipends, Musical Stipends, Coaching Stipend, and Substitute Teacher and Force Staff.
Okay, now, motion by Ms. Harris. Second by Ms. Burrow. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're in closed session.
I'm glad you're here, Melissa.
Yeah.
Great. Good to see you today.
Yeah.
You got a good question.
Yes.